Member Harper.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Bowie.
Here.
Mayor Chair Grandis.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Rick.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could announce real quick, there was no reportable action from closed session.
I was just going to ask you that. And I do want to report one thing on closed session myself, that I did recuse myself from item number two. All right, announcement of supplemental communications. Do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, in regards to item number five, a modified resolution has been provided to the City Council and the public, as well as a letter from the BIA.
All right.
That is all.
Thank you. And we turn now to Maggie Lee, our City Manager, for our awesome City Manager update.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So there has been some inquiries on street sweeping enforcement, and PD shared that the street sweeping enforcement team is fully staffed now. They are just finishing up training last week, and we anticipate citation will be issued in the next few weeks and ongoing. So we encourage residents to move their car on street sweeping day. PD will be informing the public shortly. Community Satisfaction Survey is available online through January 2024 on the city website at fountainvalley.gov. The Center at Founder's Village provides free tax assistance to people who are age sixty and older. Beginning January eighth, 2024, you can schedule an appointment for tax assistance. Appointments are available on Mondays and Wednesdays from February until April. To schedule an appointment, please call the front desk at the Center at Founder's Village at 74-593-4446. Lunar New Year Luncheon at the Center at Founder's Village on January twenty-third from eleven-thirty a.m. to one p.m. For more information, call 74-593-4446. That concludes my update, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. A lot of good stuff going on. And now for my Mayor's Report. So one of the, one of my pillars for this year was to improve communication out to the community, make sure our residents are aware of possible what's going on in the city. One of the ways that I will be doing that is look for a Mayor's Message that is being put out. I'm going to try and do it every Thursday between City Council meetings. And during that, I will be providing an update, what happened at the last City Council meeting, what's upcoming in the next City Council meeting, as well as with the Planning Commission, too, what's coming up with them. We had our first one. I want to thank our fire chief. Chief McQuade in the back there, thank you so much, sir. He stepped up and gave a presentation, if you haven't seen the video, on what's going on with our new firehouse, what's going to happen and when that's coming, et cetera. So if you haven't seen it, check our city website, check social media, check our YouTube channel, check the Mayor's Corner. It's out there, and hopefully you'll find it to be good information. One of the other things I talked about is I went through our city website and gave a little presentation on where you can find information. If you want to know the official stance of what the city is putting out there, the website is a great place to go. It's not the only place you could get information. I know Councilmember Constantine puts out a lot of good information as well. But that is, if you want the official city site, that's the place that I would go for that information. And I noticed that on our first couple of videos, we've had thousands of views. So hopefully people are embracing it and getting good information. Other things that we talked about on the website is we now have what we call the Community Calendar or the Nonprofit Event Calendar. So if you're a nonprofit and you have something going on that you want all the residents to know about, we have a site on our website that will list everything that's going on. In the past, there was always confusion of, you know, on Saturday night, you know, we were having our great, the dance team's having a great event, but so is another group. And this way you'll know if a date is already taken or if there's multiple items going on that night, you'll be able to share your information. Also, if you want to speak to the mayor or any of the council members, there's a place, a form to fill out online that if you want to invite us to an event, whether it be a ribbon cutting, a Boy Scout Eagle Scout, just want to have information or a conversation with any one of us, you could do that on the website as well. This Thursday, it'll be my first Mayor's Breakfast. So this Thursday, eight a.m., right? Eight a.m. over, I got to make sure I'm there on time, over at Fountain Valley Regional Hospital. It's in the back, not in the front, so there, if you go to our website, there's more information on that. It's a recommended donation, $2, and you get a breakfast for that, so it's a pretty good deal. And the money, too, all that money goes donated to the Fountain Valley Community Foundation. Let's see, what else? Oh, we have a new podcast that's going to be coming out. I want to thank Megan Wishner over here, right up front. Thank you, Megan. Wave to everybody. She did a really great job putting together a studio in the back over here. We're going to do an informational podcast. Hopefully you'll, it's kind of infotainment. Hopefully you'll enjoy it. There'll be information on the city and hopefully be fun to watch as well. And the best part is it didn't cost the city any money to put that all together, so great job, Megan. Really appreciate that. And that'll be out. We're going to film our first one tomorrow, so probably a few weeks after that, you'll see that. And then the last item I want to bring up is the 2024 State of the City. February fifteenth at the Saigon Grand Center. It's going to be a really great event. It's $50 to attend. You could get tickets on the city website. We do expect to sell out. It's going to be great information on 2023, a look back at Councilmember Constantine while she was mayor, and then what's coming up this upcoming year. So again, February fifteenth, tickets on sale. All right, that is the Mayor's Message. Now we get to some really fun stuff. First, we're going to have a presentation of checks to the community groups from Hyundai, presented by Rob Purzel, our Community Services Director. Rob?
Thank you so much. We are so privileged that we get to be the first presentation of your mayorship. So thank you, Mayor Grandis and council members. With me today, I have some extremely special gentlemen, Brandon Ramirez and John Gustafano. Did I say it right?
Gustafaro.
Gustafaro. I knew I was going to get it wrong. We are so excited to have him here with us today. We are extremely blessed in our community to have a corporate partner like Hyundai Motor America, and you're going to find out here shortly. But I have a little presentation that I'd like to show off about a special partnership and then check presentations to two amazing groups that worked extremely hard and had major participation in the September thirtieth Hope on Wheels Hyundai Color Run and 5K. So tonight, we are going to tell you a little bit about the, the community partnership between Hyundai Motor America and the city of Fountain Valley. They are our title sponsor for our fireworks and now drone show, and you'll see a little bit of that in a second, at our largest annual event, Summer Fest. Tree lighting, hopefully some of you remember that awesome snow zone. It was amazing this year. My kids loved it. Everybody loved it. They're title sponsor for every single event that we host. So what's special about our community events in Fountain Valley is the more support we have from our local businesses, the more we get to do. So their support directly impacts what we're able to do and have those awesome snow zones, fireworks, giveaways at our movies in the park, our concerts in the park, all those different things that we do directly benefits from our corporate sponsorships. We also host their annual 5K, and so we'll touch on that a little bit. And we've got some fun photos of the mayor throwing color over everybody. What's really special is they work directly with our Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce. They're a platinum sponsor every year to support the Chamber of Commerce and give back and support the business community as one of the largest businesses in Fountain Valley. It means a lot to everybody. And then lastly, the Hyundai Community Grants Program. They work directly through the Community Foundation to provide $25,000 that's granted out directly to community groups that come and ask for it each and every year. So it's a really special thing. So first off, they're our title sponsor for drone shows. Now it's the drone show. It was the fireworks show at Summer Fest. Here you can see the Hyundai Hope on Wheels car. It's amazing draw. Everybody loves to come and donate and support Hyundai Hope on Wheels. Donate or put their hand right on there and show their support. But for those of you that haven't seen, I think, a couple hundred drones take off, let me show you this video right here. It's pretty cool. So it's a little bit like an alien invasion, but they, they line all those drones up at the back fields of the sports park, and then you'll see what it turns into over Summer Fest this year. It was really cool. So it's a lot of fun. We get to design some of our own images. We had Hyundai written up in the sky. We've got Fountain Valley. We did a Summer Fest logo. So this sort of fun things, this community engagement, is a direct benefit from having just such an amazing corporate sponsor like Hyundai Motor America. Here, we just had this a couple of weeks ago, about a month and a half ago, our annual tree lighting, snow zone. You can see the families are having just an awesome time. Right behind our main community stage, you see, presented by Hyundai, the most snow we've ever had. We use one of the side hills going right into, right into the parking lot. We work with the fire department. Michelle Ridditis comes out and checks everything out, makes sure we still got all our clear accessways so we can help anybody out there. But you can see the smile on the mom's face there going down the snow zone. The kid looks a little nervous. The mom's having a great time, though. She knows it's all good. But it's just, it's just fantastic to be able to do this on an annual event. Again, the Chamber of Commerce, I'm now a board member on the Chamber of Commerce, and we really appreciate the annual support to be a platinum sponsor. The Fountain Valley Community Grants, it means so much for us to be able to work directly with the, with the nonprofits and community groups like Miss Fountain Valley, the youth baseball leagues, the high schools, numerous grants that have gone directly back out to support the community. And before we touch on the Hyundai 5K and Color Run, which these groups behind us are for, we're going to ask the mayor to come down and let Brandon or John say a few words and present a large check.
So we're very excited. At Hyundai, our global vision is progress for humanity. And for us, that means giving back to the community where we work and where we live. And so we're pleased to give a donation of $100,000 to the city of Fountain Valley.
You've got to stand on the stairs.
And then everyone just scooting.
Yeah, exactly. All right, one, two, and wonderful. Okay, now I'm going to do a couple of flashes. Perfect. Okay, ready? And I'll leave here. Wonderful, one, two.
One more for me, sorry. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
We're going to stay up here, and we're going to do the next one, but I got to say. All right. I'll hold that one. This will go in one of our council members' offices, I'm sure. All right, and you want this one?
Dibs.
Okay, and now on to the really fun part. We have some great community groups. We are so excited to be able to team up with Hyundai Motor America and work directly with them to present the annual Hope on Wheels 5K and Color Run. I'm going to have my two staff members come up, Jenny and Jake, that put so much time and energy, and join us up here. But we had the best turnout we've ever had for a Hyundai Hope on Wheels 5K at the Fountain Valley Sports Park. We had 844 registered runners, which was the largest 5K we've had. $16,200 went directly back to community groups just like these that are here. When you registered and got over ten runners, you got a share of all the net proceeds. It's so, again, it's so great working with Hyundai as a, as a, as a partner. Fifty percent of the proceeds, they allow the community to give right back out to those community groups, and fifty percent goes back to the Hyundai Hope on Wheels charity and/or CHOC, which is their beneficiary. So 17,200 are going back to Hyundai, and Larry actually has a check over here for you tonight if he hasn't given it to you already. And we've had seven different schools earn a total of $8,100 this year. Courageous had forty-two runners and got $1,890. Plaven, thirty-five. Geisler, nineteen. Cox, nineteen. Oka, twelve. Talbot, ten. So we're issuing the challenge right now. If schools want bigger checks, just come out bigger next year, and you can be like these groups behind us. We're going to come with our runner-up to start with. We're going to ask Masuda to come up with their, they had forty-five runners, and Hyundai is going to be presenting them with a check for $2,000. All right, and then next up, we have our huge winners with sixty-three runners and receiving $2,835. We've got the Fountain Valley High School Dance Team.
Okay, one, two, and. Wonderful, one, two, three, and one last one.
Ready, one, two, three, one, two, three. Thank you.
Well, thanks so much for this opportunity. Brandon said Hyundai is an organization deeply committed to giving back. But just a sentence about Hyundai Hope on Wheels. This is the nonprofit side of Hyundai. It's a nonprofit foundation, one of the top charities in the nation, who helps kids fight cancer. So in addition to all the impact we're having here locally, also know that with every step at the 5K, we're also helping kids across the nation help fight cancer. So thank you for being part of that important mission. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Hyundai. You guys.
Thank you so much.
You make such a difference in our community, and we so appreciate you, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And if you, if you looked close there, it is the mayor and Casey Dowson, some purple, purple color there. The Color Run is a lot of fun, and it will be in September again this year, so we encourage everybody to participate.
Great report. Thank you. All right, our next item is a certificate of recognition to Pizza D's for the Free Holiday Meal Program. Do we have the Pizza D's people here? I'm sorry? Tony's here. All right. I think we'll just move along. We'll make sure that they get recognized at the next council meeting. I'm sorry? Oh, did he come in? No? Okay. All right. Next, we'll go to the First City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority Public Comments. Are there any requests to speak on unscheduled matters?
I have no request to speak on unscheduled items.
Okay. And how about, are there any public comments on scheduled matters?
I have two requests to speak on the public hearing item number five.
Okay, well, we'll make sure everybody gets a chance to speak during the public hearing. Next, we'll go to the Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar items one through four will be approved simultaneously with one motion unless separate action or discussion is requested. Does anybody want to remove an item? Not seeing any. Do we have a motion then? Somebody, we're verbally doing it, guys. So we have a motion from Councilmember Constantine in a second.
Actually, I have a motion from Councilmember Conine and a second by Councilmember Constantine.
Okay, don't forget we're doing it verbally, guys, going forward.
Please vote. Items one through four, pass five-zero.
All right, moving right along. Item number five, public hearing. Each person will have the three minutes to speak on each public hearing. And let's see, we have a public hearing regarding the adoption of a resolution to establish an inclusionary housing in lieu fee, presentation by Omar Dadaboy, Community Development Director.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you very much. In December of last year, as you may recall, the City Council adopted an inclusionary housing ordinance. This ordinance was adopted as part of the implementation of our housing element. It required developers constructing ten or more units to set aside fifteen percent of their units for affordable housing, or those, those that are in the affordable housing income categories. Essentially, we committed to this ordinance to obtain our certified housing elements. It's one of the things that HCD's been pushing for. If you look at any of the certified housing elements in the state, they've committed to, to the inclusionary housing ordinance. All of this is in furtherance of trying to meet our RENA goals, in which 2,093 of the units, about forty-three percent, are in the lower income categories. And so that's why the state's been pushing for inclusionary housing ordinances, because it's very difficult to get to that level without some sort of commitment. So as required by state law, however, we do have to have some relief for developers. We can't just require them to build it. We have to have some other option for them. In this case, we're proposing an in-lie fee. This would be collected for the affordable units if the developer did not want to construct them. The difficult part here is calculating what that fee should be. And so that's why we have experts behind me who are going to present the, the bulk of the item to you to present how we came up with the fee. Our friends from Placeworks who present, who prepared our housing element and general plan. And so what they did was they reviewed pro formas from several developments across the county. There are at least six. One was from Fountain Valley. And based on the land construction costs on the expense side, and then the financing and the subsidies on the revenue side, they come up with the subsidy, which essentially is $296,950 for an affordable unit. And so before I call them up, I would like to mention two things. One is, there is one change in the presentation or in the report before you on the dais. Originally, we included an alternative method of calculating that 296,950, which was to do it per market rate unit, and that came out to about 44,542. And that worked perfectly well when we did it on whole numbers, but there were some little issues when we got into these little fractions. And so what we're presenting to you is just to remove that option for the 44,542 for market rate and just calculate it on the units that you owe us, which would be 296,950 for any full unit and then a portion of that for any rounding that we needed to do. So that was the first change, and then the second is, second item I wanted to mention is that the BIA did present a letter, I believe that's before you as well, with their opinion on the matter as well. And I believe they may be speaking here as they indicated to me earlier today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to, I believe, Colin Drucker with Placeworks, who will go into the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
Hello, mostly again. Again, I'm Colin Drucker with Placeworks, and I'll actually be turning it over mostly to our chief economist to explain. He's the one who really ran the numbers, understands and works with the private developers, affordable housing and market rate housing. But what I did want to go over relatively real quickly, I can entertain any questions. There are lots of different ways to mold and craft an in-lie fee. So as Omar was saying, in addition to the build requirement, there is that alternative means of compliance, which is in lieu of building the units, you can charge a fee. And up on the screen are examples from around Orange County about how, what their requirement is, when that threshold is triggered, and then those compliance options. The ones that are bolded are those where they are higher than the fee that Fountain Valley is considering right now. Some of them, like San Clemente, might be higher in some projects and might be lower in other projects as they just have, as I said, there's a lot of different ways that jurisdictions pick to set these in-lie fees. Some of them, as Omar said, talk about doing them per market rate unit. That gets complex, not only, it can get complex with the fractional units, and it can also get complex when applications, applications come in with part of the units built, and then they want to do part of the units not built. So it's just much simpler, whenever we ran the calculations, to have that one per, that one number of per affordable unit. So if you have twenty units of, that you're proposing, and your obligation is three units, fifteen percent, then you do the three times the 297, I'll just round for argument's sake, and that is your fee. Applicants can choose to decide how much that is per market rate unit, but it's just simpler for everybody if we have one number. So when we looked at all of the, there's, there's a lot more than this. And Costa Mesa is the latest to kind of compile a laundry list, list A to Z of all of the jurisdictions that have inclusionary requirements and kind of what their fees are. Some of them are still, like Lake Forest. It is essentially either similar to what Fountain Valley is looking at or slightly more, depending on if you're counting in the, the land costs or the four percent tax credit funding. So I wish I could come up there and give you apples-to-apples numbers to explain exactly how Fountain Valley compares. What I can do is turn it over to Steve to have him walk through how we got to 296,950, and then obviously we'll be available for questions about, you know, what the number is, how it gets applied, and other options.
Can you hear me? No, I probably shouldn't have jumped straight to that slide. Just to keep in mind, what we're talking about here is you have a requirement that if somebody's going to develop housing, they have to provide a certain amount of affordable housing as a part of that project. There can be a whole host of reasons, we'll touch on some, why a developer might not want to do that, might not be able to do that. And the question we're really asking ourselves is, if the developer isn't or can't meet that obligation to build those units, what does the city need to have to make sure that those units get built somewhere somehow? And that's what we're looking at with the fee. It's, it falls back upon you, if the developer doesn't do it, to, to use this fee and make affordable housing happen. Before we get into it a little bit, as we talk about affordable housing, sometimes we don't quite realize, you know, it's Orange County. This is the median income is $127,000. So moderate, this is the 2023, the July 2023 numbers from the state. You can earn up to $150,000 as a family of four and be qualified for moderate income housing. It's, it's expensive, but I guess we all know that. And who, who, who are we talking about? This list on the right here, and you know, it looks really big on my computer. I'm going to apologize if you can't read it all. Bridge Housing, they do a lot of work with homeless and affordable people. They surveyed their residents and their facilities. and these are the top 25 occupations of the people living in their facilities. So it really is a lot of the core of our society that we're talking about here. So what do we mean by affordable housing? Well, the easy answer is that a family should pay, a household should pay no more than 30% of their income for their housing cost. Now, that might be rent or a mortgage payment, but it's also utilities. If it's a mortgage payment, it's also your mortgage payment, your taxes. Do you have an HOA or you and a CFD paying for roads that got built 10 years before you moved in? You know, it's all of those things together at 30%. But the point is that the people who move into and live in the affordable housing we're talking about, they are paying rent or they are making a mortgage payment. It's just capped at what is deemed by federal government, I guess, 30% to be affordable. And so, you know, how does that shake out? I said before, you know, up to $150,000 would be a moderate income in Orange County. The maximum affordable purchase price would be $427,000. Now, this is for a family of four. And so they say a family of four should have a three-bedroom house. It doesn't matter if it's a three-bedroom mobile home or a three-bedroom condo or a three-bedroom, single-family detached house. What's affordable is 427, so that's what that's capped at regardless of the type of housing that's being provided. And the same thing on the rent. It doesn't matter what they're renting, well, it has to, you know, meet safety codes and everything. But, you know, whatever it is, that's the maximum rent they can be asked to pay. So this is just an example of one of the latest ones that was approved for the low-income housing tax credits that we'll talk about in a minute. This is going to be in Orange, 164 units. I think this is all senior. This is one where they have a 99-year lease on the land. So we're going to talk in a minute about, land's kind of expensive too, like everything else. They're not buying the land, they're making the lease payment, and that makes it a lot more affordable in some ways to get a development built. So how does an affordable housing developer build a project? It's not easy. It's really an art. So there are these things called the low-income housing tax credits. The federal government says we're going to give however many millions of tax credits they give it to each state. California, each year, has a competition. People submit their applications and compete for the tax credit equity. They get the tax credits, they sell them, they then have cash in their pocket. They sell some each year. In this particular project in Orange, the tax credit equity was about 34% of the cost of that project. They also went and got bank financing. Most projects are getting bank financing, just like a market rate developer. It's about 37%. So the, if it's, these are rentals. So the rent that comes in every month, they, that pays the operator to manage and maintain the property, put some money away in reserves, but also to make a payment on that bank loan. So that's where that money's coming from. The real art for the affordable developer is piecing in the other third of the pie. And you can see here the variety of sources they had to go through to make this project work. And the thing is, those tax credits, they're competitive. You know, the state gets all these applications and they pick the ones they think are the best. And so it's not uncommon for an affordable project to take two years, three years before they get their tax credits. But when they go in to get their tax credits, they got to say, well, here's everybody else who's helping us. So they've got to go out, find these other sources of income, get them to commit and hold on to them for two to three years. So when we started talking with affordable developers, we said, that question I asked you earlier, what would the city need to do to get, to entice you to do a project in their city? And I thought it would be the tax credit equity. Why go through all of that? You know, what if the fee was just covering that? And what they've all told us is, no, we're pretty confident. We may not get it in the first round, but we will get it. They said, what we need is the help with all of those others. That's what would make it a lot easier for us to be able to do a project. And if a city said to us, hey, we've got this piece of the pie, they are going to be interested in coming to your city to build a project. So that's the basic rationale we're starting with, is making up just that one piece of the pie. We're not asking for a fee to pay the full cost of developing affordable housing, just that one portion of it. So, yeah, we looked at the six projects in Orange County that received tax credits in the last two years.
I'm sorry, Steve, can you hold on just a second?
Yeah.
Can you go back to the previous slide?
I think.
So I guess my question is, why would you set our fee at just the affordability gap instead of the entire cost? Because presumably, we're going to get this money and then we're going to have to go and build an affordable unit somewhere in the city. So, and that's going to be, it's going to cost probably more than this affordability gap for us to do that per unit. So why not set the fee at, if it costs us, you know, $400,000 a unit, why not use that number instead of this gap number?
400 and a little higher?
A little, okay, 500, 600, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Because we're going to be underfunded, you know, unless we get, unless we're able to get the...
I would say from one perspective, and, you know, for a lot of this, there's no right or wrong answer. You know, you're elected to express your values on how you want to approach these things. I would say from one perspective, yes, you could do that. You could just say, and then... Did somebody do that in one of the other ones, say it was just the cost of building an affordable unit?
It was, I think, Lake Forest.
Yeah. So you could do that. But what that does is then drive up the cost of all the other housing that gets built, that's actually the ones who are going to be paying that fee. So we approached it from... It sounds terrible. Not really what's the minimal thing the city has to do, but really, what is the one chunk that the city could do that would be able to result in affordable housing getting built? Because at the end of the day, our approach was, what does it take to actually get the affordable housing built? But there's no reason you couldn't go the other direction, say we'd rather just get it and get the stuff built sooner than waiting on bringing in affordable developer and, you know, going through two or three years of running it through the state, trying to get lucky on the tax credit funding. So along the bottom of the screen, you can see the six projects we looked at. These were the ones that received tax credit funding. They're the ones in Orange County that received it. And so we looked at all of these. We looked at their total development cost for all six of them, $251 million. They were paying for these, $28 million is the total paid for the land. Now, that's the one thing that becomes really problematic, because there are still some cities that have, was it 2011 when we got rid of redevelopment agencies? And cities are still doling out some property for affordable housing. But that's the super hard part in Orange County for affordable housing, is finding land. So a lot of these are getting land, they're not paying the full cost of the land. They're getting, you know, working to deal with the city that has land or in other ways to get land. But for these six, the total spent for land cost was 28 million. If we drop that out, and don't worry, we're going to come back in a minute, because we're going to plug in the cost of land in Fountain Valley to make it more meaningful for getting housing built here. That's still about $223 million to build 467 affordable units. Now, think about that. That's the six projects that will get built in Orange County over a two-year period. So that's 467 units. But that makes the average cost if, without land, $478,000 per unit, if the land were free. So then we looked at those two funding sources. So the bank financing that, across these six projects, was a total of $72 million, which is $154,000 per unit. And that federal tax credit equity worked itself out to be $102 million or $219,000 per unit. So of that pie, the two big pieces that the affordable developers told us they're confident they can get is $373,000 per unit. So we still have, before we even add in the land cost, you know, a gap that needs to be made up, plus the cost of land. And so we looked at, was it four land sales? I forget, it's in the report. You know, four land sales that were...
Four major project sites.
Yeah, four major project sites and what that worked out to. And so if we look at this, based on those six projects, and we took all of those funding and costs and adjusted them for inflation to July 2023, so that if next year you want to raise this to keep going with inflation, which I hope you will, you know, it would fall in line with your budget cycle when you would do those things. But what we're looking at would be $478,000 in construction costs and another $192,000 in land cost per unit. And then if we take out the $219,000 that the affordable developer will bring to the table, financed through conventional bank financing, and $154,000 that they would bring to the table through the tax credits, that leaves a gap of $296,950 per unit.
Why you subtract the bank financing? Because isn't that just a loan? It's not really, you're not really getting the money. I see the tax credit, you're, you don't have to pay that back, right?
Oh, you're right. You're right. So, but it's the money they need to put the project on the ground. They've got to have the bank financing to put it on the ground. Unless, like I said, the one in Orange, they have a 99-year lease. They're going to pay $700-some thousand per year. Well, for however long, 50 years maybe, I don't know however long, you know, they keep their project there. But they don't need money to purchase the land upfront. Whereas you're probably not going to be in that wheelhouse. Can't say, you know, that, I don't want to get myself in trouble. School districts sometimes have excess property and they can land lease it. But absent that, this is where you would be in trying to find land to build affordable housing. So I do want to stick up a minute for the market rate developer, because sometimes they get portrayed as the boogeyman and they're just awful money grubbers. And that's really not how that works either. You know, for the market rate developer, the person that comes up here and talks to you and tells you how great their project is, they love their project, it's great. But they're going through the same thing. They've got to go to a bank and get a construction loan. And the bank says, well, you know, we don't know if you're going to be successful, so we're not going to loan you all of that money. You have to put some money in, just like all of us. We go to buy a house, we don't borrow the full amount, we got to put some money in. That's the equity, this blue box here. Typical kind of ratio you might see is the cash the developer puts in. And usually, that developer is, it's not all the developer's money. Especially on a major project, a big project, they're going to the capital markets. They may be going to real estate investment trusts, wealthy individuals. Those are the people who are saying, well, you know, I've got this guy in Fountain Valley that wants to build a project and I've got this, you know, ski resort in Colorado, which one should I invest my money in? They're just looking at where they're going to get the best return, the safest return for their money. You know, the developer's really concerned about the project, but the people who put the money in, not always. And so the, you know, the market rate developer really has to walk a tight line between attracting the investment that's needed to make the project work, making the City Council happy to approve the project, which means keeping the public and the neighbors happy, and going through all the hoops of what, you know, the regulations are to be built. Plus, they have to be able to think about what they're going to sell two or three years from now and who's going to buy it, and anticipating all of that. So there's a lot of art that goes into it from the market rate developer's standpoint. The last thing I show you is just kind of a simplified timeline. And the blue is, again, it's the money the developer's putting in, and the orange is the construction loan. So until the developer has entitlement, he's probably not getting a bank loan. They're putting their own money into it. And then you all sign off on it, they've got entitlement, they start bringing in the bank loan and start paying for things with them. They've still got planning, site work, all of this construction to do. You get all the way out there, towards the end, they finally start selling some houses or selling whatever it is they're building, but they don't get that money. The bank gets paid back first. It's not till the very end that the developer might make a profit. And so from the developer's perspective, there's years here where it could be a recession, it could be any, anything. It'd just be the market changing and people not wanting that product that they've spent two years trying to get approved and built. So there's a lot of risk that goes into it for the developer. And so the fact that they might not want to build the affordable units doesn't mean they hate affordable housing. It means they've got 100 different balls in the air they're trying to juggle, and it may not be possible for them with what they need to do to attract the equity investment to actually be able to build the affordable units. So, you know, we're all, I think pretty much we're all working together, trying to get housing for people who can afford it and housing for people who might need some affordability assistance in what they're, for their living arrangements. Did I cover everything? No questions?
Any questions from council?
Yeah.
Before we go to the public hearing, Councilmember Harper?
You have a question. So once, let's say we charge this fee and now we've got, I don't know, $10 million in the fund. What is our requirement under the law to use these funds to provide affordability? Do we have to build them within a certain period of time? Does it just sort of add up in the fund and it's restricted and we don't really have to bill it?
I think in your ordinance, you have some things set out. I would say the most common thing you would probably be doing with it is buying land. Because again, for an affordable developer, they may be two or three years to get all the funding in place.
What, no, that's not my question. What is our requirement under the law to use that funds? Do we have a certain amount of time to use it or lose it? Or what?
I believe that's the city attorney. I don't believe there's any specific requirement in that regard, other than what you put in your ordinance.
Yeah, there's, I mean, you can, you can bank it. There's no strict requirements on timing. There used to be some requirements on redevelopment funds and some things that jurisdictions ran afoul of.
So we could just bank these funds and never use it?
I think the, and then the other Colin can jump in. My understanding is that with HCD, if you don't use your funds and you're not making progress on any housing, you're not, you're actively showing that you're just kind of holding funds and not doing anything. It's not necessarily, you're in a direct violation. It's more of a housing element compliance. And perhaps there's some, something that Mr. Burns can help with.
No, that's my understanding, is HCD will look at how you're administering your program and see if you're administering it in good faith or not. And if you're not doing it in good faith, then they will go after your housing element. If, I believe the, some other procedural rules in state law regarding development impact fees apply. I think we have to keep an inventory of the funds that we receive and how we use them. And I believe we have to make a report every five years and HCD will take a look at that report. So there's some, there's some monitoring, there's some... So there's some there's some monitoring, there's some there's some nexus requirements and certainly HCD will take a look and see if you're actually implementing your your housing element and your in lieu fee in good faith.
Okay, I guess I guess from my from my perspective, I'd like to sort of sort of, I guess, get a little more detail on what's required in that regard because if we are, you know, what what really would we have to do to prove good faith? Would we have to build units and what do we think we have to do so that we can? If it's if it says, oh, we got to build it within five years, then that will that's going to affect my opinion on how much fee we should charge is how how strict they are with what we have to do with these funds.
Councilmember Harper, just want to remind us too that we still have a public hearing before we offer opinions or anything. So we'll we'll answer any other questions and then we'll open up the public hearing.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, Omar, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was just going to say, I think sometimes when we think of in lieu fees, we go to like parking lufies, those have certain amount of time limit that we have to use the funds. This is a separate mechanism and so we're not tied to say parking lufy timings, but we can come back to council and if you want that data, we'll come back at a later point and give you the information on on that.
Actually, I do have a question for you. So I'm just a little bit, I want to make sure I understand completely. Is this strictly for the selling of homes or is it also for apartments or rentals too?
Both.
Because my understanding for rentals for affordable housing, for example, if a normal rent should be 3,000 and because of affordable housing, the developer has to rent it for two, then that's $1,000 short there they are per month or 12,000 per year. Wouldn't there be something along that formula that the the lack of loss of affordable housing rental concessions that should be the fee? I don't know if that's, do you understand the question, Steve or?
Not exactly understanding the question, but I think there's two things. This is only for new construction, so it has nothing to do with anything that's on the ground today.
Right.
And then the part we haven't really talked about is if the developer is providing some or all of the affordable units, they're then eligible for a density bonus. And so sometimes, just depending on the size of the property and what the base density is to start with, that might be enough to compensate for that difference in rent on some of the units, or it might not.
One thing I don't think I fully understand on this is also the compensation for once the housing sales or the rental income comes in. Seems like we're trying to cover the complete cost of a unit, but there's income for the developer at some point.
Isn't that where the bank financing comes from?
Yes, so for the affordable developer who might build a project and then operate it, yeah, they are getting income, but it's the operations and maintenance, everything it takes to, you know, just own and maintain the property. And then they do have that bank loan that they're paying off. And so they're usually.
They're not for nonprofit. They're making a profit. So how do we factor in the profits that they make either in the sale of the home or in the rentals that they collect?
Most of the affordable are nonprofit, aren't they?
Well, they're, I I think what you're saying is they're they're not for profit, but they still but not for profits still have a target profit to to make often so that they can they can reinvest and accept the risk. And you're, I think if I understand your question, I'm sure I'm getting feedback, but shouldn't be next to you. If I'm understanding your question correctly, you're asking whether or not we've accounted for either not for profit or potentially even for profit developers' profit margins and whether or not this fee is going to cover that as well?
No.
No?
So I'm not, forget about nonprofit.
Okay.
I'm assuming it's a for profit entity. I'm looking thinking about the some of the projects that'll be coming before us. Those developers are in there to make money.
Right.
They have to do a certain amount of affordable housing. So if they to do that affordable housing, they're either selling it below what they normally would get, so they they're they're selling, it could sell for this, they're selling it for that, so they're losing out on this on affordable housing. Same thing with rent. But there's that's the only part we should be covering because they're still making money. They still get the rental income on the sale of the home.
Okay, yeah. So there's two things going on. So you might have a market rate developer who's going to build some townhouses or condos for sale and has to sell some of those at an affordable price.
Right.
And so if they can use that density bonus to put more units on the same amount of land and they can accommodate it and and the project would be more profitable than it would be without the affordable and without the density bonus, then they might do that. They might just build them. But you're not doing anything for that developer. What we're talking about is the developer who can't make it work to build the affordable units is going to pay you a fee. And then you would, as you collect these fees as a city, you would partner with the an affordable developer who usually is nonprofit. Or you might you might partner with a nonprofit that does works with moderate income households on a home buyer program. And they're trying to cobble it together, grant money for down payment assistance and, you know, doing things to help those individuals get into a home. So you, you know, you would have, as you go through this, the leeway to pick how you wanted to, you know, get affordable housing accomplished in Fountain Valley. And I don't want to say anything wrong here, the attorney will jump in if I'm wrong. You could decide, you know, when we spend this money, we only want to spend it through nonprofits.
Okay.
Just can I follow follow the thread? So on in the sampling that you did, are these all 100% affordable?
Yeah, so this is what the affordable developers do. Their projects are 100% affordable.
Got it, okay.
Because to compete for the low income housing tax credits, they, you know, they have to have a spectrum of income ranges within the low income range. You know, they've got a lot of things they have to meet and.
So I think what you're saying is if I can kind of, I think it's sort of starting to make sense now is that if we were to take these the subsidy per unit, go to somebody that's going to want a 100% affordable developer, based on these other developments, if we provided them that subsidy, that would give them that would fill the gap to let them build the.
Yeah, and that would make them say, answer the phone and say, yes, we'll be right there.
Got it, got it. Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, I I guess just my only comment on that was what I was thinking is the fee that we should charge should be the amount that doesn't hurt the developer by doing affordable housing. So if they charge less in rent, that's the portion that they should have to pay because if they did affordable housing, this is what their cost would, lack of revenue would be. Omar?
Yeah, I I think what might be helpful be helpful as well is just talk about the developer. So, you know, we have a couple of developers that are interested in the city right now. The discussion we're having with them is, one, they're using density bonus and so they're already going to get to some affordable levels anyway.
Right.
Two, we daylighted this issue when the housing element was there and so it's been talked about at the onset. But especially for developers that are coming in the future, we're telling them about this inclusionary housing ordinance and in lufy. So what they do, and as the city manager and I met with three, had a presentation with three affordable or developers generally, they'll come up with the the land price through the residual land value, right? So they're going to look at all their costs and this being one of them costs, right? So the subsidy of these 15%. And they're going to back into the land value based on their cost, this being part of that. And so it's going to be a combination from the onset of when they're even conceiving of a project to look at how much they're going to pay for that property. And maybe this 15% kind of eats into a little bit of their profit and it's going to maybe touch on how much they pay for the property. But that's when the real process starts is when they're actually looking at even purchasing the property because that's when they factor in all these costs in their revenues and they actually go and purchase the property. And so it starts at that point and then that leads to all these financing and other decisions that they make.
Okay. Why don't we at this point, unless there's another question immediately, I'm going to open up the public hearing. I know we have a couple of people who want to speak, so at this point, I'll open the public hearing. And Rick, if you would please call the first speaker.
First speaker is Anna Gromas. Your timer will be up there to your left.
I'll be brief. Good evening, Mayor, Council and staff. My name is Anna Gromas and I'm here before you this evening representing the Building Industry Association, specifically the Orange County chapter. I believe my colleague Adam Wood sent you all a letter. I hope you've had a chance to review that. In short, for every $1,000 increase to the median home price in California, over 7,000 families are placed out of ownership. Tonight, you are asked to increase the cost of housing by $44,000. There is a better way to do this. We ask that you consider alternative two, which is a reduced fee, or alternative three, which is no fee at all. We also ask that you direct staff and your consultant to study the Fountain Valley housing market, not a countywide snapshot. We need market information from your community to understand specifically what is happening inside Fountain Valley. The BIA and others stand ready to assist, but please consider the harm that imposing a $44,000 fee on housing will cause the community. I thank you for your time.
I actually have a question for you. If we don't do the fee, where how are we going to do affordable housing? Where's the money going to come to do it? What is your recommendation?
That is a great question. It's actually a more involved discussion and we, if you guys are open to it, we would actually like to invite a builder representation, a builder focus group to come meet with you all to sort of discuss that because I do think it's it's very detailed and complex to go into tonight.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Anna. Who's next?
Katie Wright.
Welcome, Katie.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. I'm just a citizen. I'm not a brilliant person when it comes to finance, economy, all this development. But I've been here through the last couple of years now watching the Rena arguments, this whole community development, giving developers this break or that break to try and make everything work. I'm not an expert. I'm just a citizen. I've been watching this. I've come down here and I actually was honored to go to the Prado Homes opening. I was just so amazed that happened under your jurisdiction, Mr. Harper, Councilman Harper. And I was just flabbergasted at the fabulous accomplishment. This nonprofit and more than one nonprofit and all these agencies got together and they created this incredible low housing. Everyone here, there's everyone here knows what I'm talking about. That was so wonderful. Everybody kept saying, gee, it's a shame we can't do this more often. It's a shame we can't do more of this, but we don't have the land to do it. I don't see how in all this conversation about, well, if we get this money, we can invest it and get land and we can do our own low income housing. Excuse me, but if it wasn't possible a year or two ago that we didn't have the land, I don't see how it's possible now. And I'm not trying to be dense and I'm not trying to be argumentative. It just does not make sense to me, one standard citizen who's been following this. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Would anybody else like to speak?
We have one more request to speak.
Welcome, Cheryl.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The project on Harbor was paid, the land was paid down with sale of other redevelopment property. Of course, that's gone. But that's how that was accomplished. So there was city money, low income housing money put into that project. We don't have redevelopment property anymore, so that's never going to happen again. At about $4 million an acre, I don't see the city buying any property if it even were for sale. Where developers benefit is the, I've already forgotten the term, but the increased number, help me out. Density bonus. It allows them to build more, which in return makes more or rents more, either one. But that's how they make this work. So I don't see you ever buying property. It's never for sale, remember. Today, it's over 4 million an acre and you just, you would only be collecting that money if somebody was building new housing and not willing to put in low income. I don't see that happening either. Low income's easy enough to do with all these other benefits, density benefits being one.
So is your is your comment then that you would say that we should automatically require affordable housing of every developer and not allow a lufy? Just confirming that's what you're.
No, I think you should allow an in lieu fee. If somebody can build one more unit beyond what they'd be allowed by paying a density bonus, then that's their decision. I've forgotten already what was the number that you could build? Anything more than 10, is that right? So if you could build 11 units, you might be willing to pay that that in lufy. It's a one time, you know, you're kind of done, but now you've got a market unit you can sell.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Any other comments or questions by council?
Yes.
Councilmember Constantine?
Okay, so I don't like this. Developers that want to come to Fountain Valley to do projects, they need to get with it. They need to provide affordable housing. This, this is, yeah, this is not good. This is not in the absolute best interest of this community. So I will be voting no. Thank you.
Councilmember Harper?
Yeah, but I think I think we're required to offer this. I don't think there's a choice, if I'm correct. Even though we have an inclusionary housing ordinance, I believe that we are required by law to provide a in lieu fee option. Is that correct?
Right. State law says you have to provide an in lieu fee for rental and then you have to provide some sort of alternative for ownership.
Okay, so even if even if we wanted not to have the fee, we we still have to have it, so.
Well, the fee's way too low.
I had a question then for, I guess for Omar. Some of the other cities have the fee calculated as amount per on a square footage basis. Sometimes they calculate it project by project basis. Varies whether it's a rental or an ownership. And also, I guess, I had a question on how would we peg it to inflation? Do we have to reset the fee every year or that kind of stuff? So that's a lot of lot of questions for you, but what are your what are your thoughts on those different methods and questions?
I'll take the last part of it first. So we do have a CPI kicker in there, so it does increase annually to keep up with inflation. Sometime housing costs, especially land acquisition and inflation are much higher, but at least the CPI will keep us pretty close. And then we can always readjust every few years as we think is necessary as we got to market. Just to go back to previous comment, I think our goal is to have the the developers build these units, right? We don't want to provide a fee that's too low, that disincentivizes them. They just pay the fee and then they don't have to do it. But we also need to make it fair, right? And so this is the process we went through to try to make it as fair as possible. I think in terms of the square footage and everything else, we just try to make it as simple as possible and give some sort of clarity. And so I think that's what Placeworks came back with. We can go back, some cities do the per square foot and, you know, they can calculate it a different way. But for us, it's seen like a good way to do it. I think as we implement it in the future, you know, we may come back to you with some tweaks to the ordinances and to the fee resolution, but I think for us right now, in terms of getting it off the ground, I think this is an easy way for us to kind of implement it and calculate it. But I think for us right now, in terms of getting it off the ground, I think this is an easy way for us to kind of implement it and calculate it.
What about, what about calculating on a, like a project-by-project basis? Does that, I guess you'd come up with the same result, right?
Yeah, or, you know, we'd have to probably then go through the, I'm not sure, I'd have to contact those cities to see how they do it, but I'm guessing that we'd have to have some pro forma from them and then vet it through some sort of fiscal analysis to see if we agree to the numbers and see how much that subsidy would need to be for each project.
Okay. And then what about, it was interesting on the ownership that it's not required on in-lu fees for ownership projects, is that?
Yeah, so I.
So what would be, we'd have to let them do land, we still have to provide an alternative?
Land dedication or some other alternative, yeah. Which actually will, we've committed to offering that alternative as well, so we're going to be coming back with that alternative. One of our property owners in the city requested it. We thought it was a good idea, so we're going to be coming back with that as an option in the near future as well.
Okay. All right, thanks. That's all I have for now.
I have one more thing.
Councilmember Constantine?
Yes. So successful developers either have money or access to money or both. And I think we should not walk on eggshells. We should not give them a hall pass. I, I don't understand. I mean, this is really, really disturbing to me with all the efforts that's been put into this. We can do better. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council, Vice Mayor Bowie?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a question for Steve. So the, my colleague here has a concern about thinking that it's too low. And I'm sure that your, you know, firm has looked into and come up with those numbers, 296. I'm sure, can you, perhaps you could enlighten that, that then it will justify that those number is reasonable and fair? Can you explain how you come up with that number?
He went through the whole slide.
I know, so she explained to her, but.
Yeah, but I, I would say the, the core of it is talking to the affordable housing developers and find out what, what it takes to get them able to build it. You know, so the way we approached it was, you know, as I said at the beginning, what do you need in order to get that affordable housing unit built if the market rate developer can't do it?
Okay.
And this is what we, they didn't give us a number. They said, yeah, if you, if you, if the, if the city comes to the table, making up for that bundle of other grants we have to chase down, that's what makes it easy. We can do the other two things easily.
Okay, I, I get, I just want you to recap so, you know, the message is clear. So the, the point of this is to make the home affordable, correct? And the, we're talking about the builders. There must be some kind of requirement for the builders if the new builder comes in and take this money to build affordable housing. What is the requirement for them? For example, they can't turn around and sell their property for the next 20 years, 30 years? If not, it's not going to be affordable housing anymore. I don't think we, we talked about that.
So if, if they pay the in-lu fee, then that in-lu fee goes to the city. So it doesn't go to the builders. So they pay, they pay the in-lu fee, and then they build all market rate units. And those market rate units have no restriction on them, so they do whatever they want with those units. And then the city gets that, that fee. If the builder takes that inclusionary requirement and opts to build the units, then there are restrictions on how long those have to be retained as affordable, what happens after that period goes away, et cetera.
Yeah, that's the one that I want. If you could enlighten a little bit on that one?
So the, in, in the ordinance, it was passed, you know, for life me, I've been looking at so many other cities' examples. I can't remember the, the period of, of time. Was it 45 years, 55 years? The covenant, the term of the restriction? Yeah, I, I think it's, it's somewhere between 45 and 55 years that it's restricted. They used to be 30 years back in the 80s and the 90s, and then state law and some other funding mechanisms went through and encouraged longer conservation. So 55 years, those units, whether they're for sale or rental, they have to be affordable. They, they get to rise with the, the median income, so it doesn't just stay constant for the next 30 years. It's not, you know, New York City rent-controlled, and people start, oh, never mind. So anybody who builds the units in the future in Fountain Valley that are affordable, they're going to be subject to those restrictions in the city's inclusionary housing. So 55 years, and then who knows what happens in the interim, whether or not those get extended or whether or not state law changes and, and changes that.
Great. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from council? So I guess at this point, we're either looking for a motion or Councilmember Constantine, if you want to.
Yeah, I would, I would move to continue this item till the next one or two. I'd, I'd like to have a little more time to peruse the data. There's, you know, and just looking at the chart of other cities, Laguna, let's see, Agoura Hills, I saw, has a, let's see, let me find it. Agoura Hills subsidies, 285,000 per, per apartment. Actually, it varies based on the income level of affordability. Laguna Beach is 245 to 345,000, so there are a couple that are kind of in the range. I wonder if you could convert some of the other cities to be apples to apples. A lot of them have square footage, just to see, you know, what our 296,000 compares to.
Yeah, we, we started to, to try to do that. What we'll do is, I think, look at some example projects to see, here's the square footage of that, here's the size of the project. You know, some of them will say it's a certain amount per square foot. For this size of project, we'll, I think we'll just try to provide as many apples to compare as possible.
Yeah, I don't have to do every single one, but a few more apples would be.
And then, then we can, we can also highlight the kind of the, the, not the implications. What happens when you, like in Huntington Beach, they cap it at 2,000 square feet, so the fee stopped after 2,000 square feet. So what does that mean? What, what are people incentivized to do? So I think we can provide additional information about what happens when you do this option, this option, this option.
And then I guess maybe just to circle back on the requirements to show good faith of, of the use of the in-lu fees.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Any restrictions on the city or requirements to?
Yeah, those are, that's another thing I like. And so that'd be, that'd be my recommendation to have a little more time to chew on the data and then.
Okay.
Bring it back for the next one or two council meetings.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, I'd move to bring it back, table it till the, the, not the, not the next meeting, but the second February.
February 20th is the next, after January 30th.
Oh, there's no February 6th?
No, we're doing January 30th instead. We moved it up a week.
Okay, so February 20th. Let's bring it back to the February 20th meeting.
Is there a second? There's a second by Councilperson Constantine. I guess one question before the little discussion. I'm just curious, Councilwoman Constantine, that, if that number is too low, what number would you be more comfortable with?
Well, it's not a one-person city council, but you guys, I think with continuing it, I think we can do so much better.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Vice Mayor Bowie?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to add to my colleague, Councilmember Harper, or the consultant company. If you do a comparison, apple in terms of square footage, as, I just, because that's going to be a lot of details, right? That you have to look into, because I give an example, the city of Irvine, they, they might use high-end product versus city of Santa Ana, right? Because the cost per square footage is based on the finished product. What, what, you know, high-end material on the finished product or low-end material, that's going to affect the square footage price. So I just want to conscience that if you are going to do apple-apple, you have to make sure that it's the same finished product.
Yeah, I think.
If not, it's, the number's going to be way off.
Yeah, I, I think we'll try and make it as, as similar an apple product as we can.
Yeah, that's going to be a lot of detail.
Yeah, and we have, I think Irvine's information is in there on, and a lot of them vary as well, you know, huge ranges. So we'll, again, we'll just give you as many apples as possible.
Right. Thank you. Just want to add that on.
Yeah, I, I guess my opinion on this too is that we want affordable housing available. I mean, that's what we need. The cost of housing is extremely high, and I think what we're trying to do here with this number was a break even of, you know, what's the benefit to the developer, and let's take that money and use it elsewhere. I think there should almost be a penalty on top of it, because we don't want them to be motivated or incented not to do affordable housing. We want them to build affordable housing, because we need it. So just think about that, too. All right.
I couldn't agree more with Mayor Glenn Greenest, but when you mentioned penalize, I, I got a caution on that one, that probably have a city attorney looking to it, can we do that or not? You know, if we do that, you know, because the key is we have to leave the, the options, right? Like, like you mentioned earlier.
Yeah, you, you have to have an alternative means of compliance. There's no, no, there's nothing in state law that says the fee has to allow every developer to break even or to, to make it possible. Projects vary wildly. Some may be able to make it work. Some, their site size may be able to make it work. Some just have the familiarity of funding the financing. So you can have the fee be what, what we're recommending. You could have it be higher and just, and understand, you know, here's the implications of, and we can talk through what are the implications of a higher fee, whether or not incentivizes, disincentivizes types of behavior.
Okay, at this point, we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. And the motion is to motion to table.
The motion to table this item until February 20th, City Council Meeting passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move, oh, do we have the pizza, are you guys the pizza D's guys by chance? No, they're not. Okay. Do pizza D's ever show up? I don't see them. Okay, I was going to try and give them a break.
They did, but they felt that they were under dress, so they.
Oh. When you do good in our community and you're going to get in the war, don't worry about how you're dressed. We want to thank you. Okay, so we'll keep moving on. Administrative items, number six is to approve the city's voluntary participation in the PPG EMT IGP program per Assembly Bill Number 1705, and authorize the city manager to execute the public provider intergovernmental transfer program for ground emergency medical transportation services certification form for state calendar year 2024 and future calendar years, and pay all necessary invoices presented by our fabulous fire chief, Bill Mc, oh, no, it's not fire chief. It's supposed to be fire team.
Italian chief in lieu of. Mayor Greenest, thank you, and City Council, thank you for this opportunity to explain this program that the city is already benefiting from, that we believe we should be participating in. So a very complicated assembly bill, so I'm going to try my best to explain and answer any questions that you guys have. This was an assembly bill that was implemented January 1st of 2023. And it, and it basically, we, the city was participating in other areas of Medicare or Medi-Cal reimbursement, namely, the city was participating in the COF program or the Quality Assurance Fee program. What this new legislation did was end all those and then implement this new legislation. Basically, what it does for the public providers of emergency ground ambulance transport is to receive an add-on payment for Medi-Cal transports. So only the patients that are Medi-Cal, we receive an additional fee or reimbursement for that transport. And I'll, I'll go over those fees in more detail in a little bit. So the reason why we're coming to you now in 2024 is the, our understanding of the program wasn't very, it wasn't, it was initiated very poorly, in our opinion. So we weren't sure if our participation would have resulted in a negative or positive revenue for the city. So we decided to not initially commit and evaluate the program for a year. And through that evaluation, we have now determined that this program is a valuable program for us to be participating in. But some of the things that, that held us off in that initial commitment was it launched in the middle of our fiscal year, so it made it difficult for us to budget for that. And the, the program actually mandated our receipt of those, those Medicare or Medi-Cal reimbursements, but it didn't, made the paying into the system voluntary. And we weren't sure if the, the payers were going to pay those, those additional fees. So since then, and we actually have numbers from our, our billing, contracted billing agency to year-to-date in 2023, from January to November, our cost recovery for those Medi-Cal transports was $810,000. And so that's why, I mean, you'll see the, the actual cost for the city for that program, why it'll be beneficial for our city to recover some of the cost for the ambulance service we provide. So kind of to go into what the, what this IGT, first of all, PPG EMT IGT stands for Public Provider Ground Emergency Medical Transfer, Intergovernmental Transfer. So it's a mouthful, and, and, but I'm going to kind of go into what, what that process is and why, why we are paying into the system just to get more money back out. So these first two bullets points essentially say the same thing. The, the agreement between the, the Department of Healthcare Services, the DHCS, which is California's branch of the Medicaid program, Medi-Cal, they administer Medi-Cal. The agreement with the, the federal government is that we'll provide a certain amount, and then the federal government will match that, those fees through a federal match. And those agreements, but the state actually cannot use any of its general funds to, to fund that, that program. So that's why all the funding needs to come from the funding agencies to get to that number, so the federal government can match that number and then increase the, the amount that's reimbursed to the city. So this is a statewide program, so all the, the public providers that provide ground ambulance transport that are authorized through Medi-Cal to provide those services, our, our share of that, that non-federal share is $410,000. That includes the, the fees, plus the administrative fees that the DHCS charges to administer the program. So like I said in the beginning, this program had some weird attributes to it. Our, our participation, our, our payment into the program is voluntary. However, the benefit that we receive is not voluntary. We automatically receive those increased Medi-Cal add-ons to the transports. So, but in order for this program to be, to sustain itself, it needs 100% buy-in from the provider agencies. So if one agency like ourselves doesn't participate in this program, it's on the backs of all the other agencies. So middle of last year, there was a conference in Palm Springs that went over this program, and the, the Cal Fire Chiefs have been a, a big push of this program. Indicated about 91% of agencies in California are participating or have intended to participate in this program. So our initial concern was if not enough agencies participate, then we're going to put all this money in, and the program's going to fail, and we're not going to be able to recoup that money. But, but from what we've seen so far over the last year, the participation is strong. And that's why we believe we should contribute our fair share of this program, so that this program doesn't fail, because we've already seen the benefit of increased reimbursement for Medi-Cal transports. So I just want to go over just the fees for cer, or the, the fees and the increased amount. So the, the Assembly Bill established an increased add-on fee for Medicare transports. So the current fee for service rate that Medicare or Medi-Cal was giving us was $118.20 per transport, which is not even close to the amount needed to recover the cost that the city pays to provide ambulance service. That, the new add-on amount. That, the new add-on amount for, through the PPG EMT IGT program is $946.92, which results in an increased payment, or the total payment of $1,065.12. So just to compare that with the previous program that the city was participating in, which is the quality assurance fee, the add-on amount for that program was $220, and the total that we were receiving from that program was $338.20 per, per transport. So a very significant increase in the amount of cost recovery that the city can get from these Medicare, Medi-Cal transports. So basically, the this, I'm just going to go over the process. The state, the state agency, the Department of Healthcare Services goes through in order for us to pay this, the, our share of of this program. And so they're going to send us an invoice. They send us a certification form that basically indicates that we are, we are voluntary providing this fee to support this program, to get that federal match down and get that increased payment, and then they'll send us a memo. So this kind of goes through what I just talked about. They send us a certification form. The city manager will sign that form, and, and that'll allow us to participate in this program. And so essentially, what are, and I, I'm sorry, I forgot to go over, in preparation for this program, the fire department has already budgeted for being able to fund and pay for this program. However, we waited because we weren't sure if it was going to be beneficial to the city. So they asked today, tonight is not for more money, but it's basically permission to jump into this program, participate, pay our fair share into this program, and, and continue to benefit and continue the success of this program. So our recommendation, our recommendation is that you approve our voluntary participation in this program and that you give the city manager the authority to sign the form and make any necessary payments for this program. So the the program is paid quarterly, so our share of of the fees for statewide is 400, about $410,000. So quarterly, we're looking at $102,000 of a payment into this program that that we're going to be paying each quarter. So hopefully, I've explained that well. I wrote a million notes, and I don't think I went by any of them, but are there any questions?
You did a great job. Thank you. Any questions from council? Actually, I have a question. Are you look, are we looking to retroactively pay back or just go forward?
No, no. So we, we just are going to pay the invoices that we get moving forward, so.
Okay, just want to confirm that. Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the council?
I have a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Constantine, a second. From Councilmember Kinnin with the flick of the wrist, I assume that.
No, he already motioned.
He already motioned.
Yeah, you got to look at the screen, please.
I made, I made the correction. I have the motion by Councilmember Constantine, the second by Council, Vice Mayor Bowie to approve the item.
Excellent. Okay. Let's get a vote.
Item number six passes 5-0.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, can I, I just want to also thank the the chief and the battalion chief for continuing to keep our ambulance program up to date, and I know there's a lot of laws to keep up with, but it's really bringing in some good cost recovery for the for the city. Appreciate all your hard work on that. Thanks.
Well said. Thank you. Okay, so item number seven, mid-year budget review for fiscal year 2324, presentate, I'm going to look this time, okay, presentation by Ryan Smith, our finance director. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Grandis and council. This item tonight is a review, a mid-year review of our budget. So kind of going over, I'm going to kind of go through our current budget that we have in place right now. And then our finance manager, Robin Harnish, is going to go through some of the details of the mid-year budget adjustments that are being requested. And then I'll walk through some of the staffing modifications and the next steps after that. So our current budget, if you remember back in June of 2023, was adopted with $75.5 million of operating revenues and $72.5 million in operating expenditures, which leads to an operating surplus of about $3 million. On top of that, we had general fund capital and internal service fund transfers, which totaled about $13.6 million, and that led to a net general fund deficit of $9.15 million. So with that, Robin is going to go into more of the details of the adjustments that we're requesting now at mid-year.
Hello, good evening. All right, what we're looking at here is current and revised budget with our adjustments that we're proposing today. So starting out, we have $76.9 million is the current adopted budget. We're proposing almost $1.6 million in in revenue for an adjusted budget of 78.5. The, at a high level, the, we're asking for 300 more thousand for property taxes, and that's based on some projections by our consultant, HDL. We have one-time revenues, park impact fee, insurance reimbursements for property damage, and miscellaneous income. So that is an additional, sorry, I forgot the numbers, $117,000. Sorry, wrong way. Let's continue. Falck ambulance contract that was already approved back in July of last year, that's an extra $200,000. And then we have state grants, one and a half million for the UAP earmark. We have a PLHA grant. SB2 has already been received, and then we also have a LEAP grant that's still pending. We expect to receive later this fiscal year.
Just, just to be clear, these are all positive impacts to revenue?
Yes.
I wanted to be clear that.
Yes.
Because it looks with the brackets, it looks like it could be a loss. I want everyone to understand that's a positive impact.
Yes, the only reduction is the 500,000 to community service donations, and that's just based on actual activity because nothing's been received so far. Okay, so now looking at expenditures, we're starting out with an $86 million budget. We're looking at increasing that to 1.4 for a total of 87.5 revised budget. So we have our largest increases are Public Works. It's a total of almost $118,000. We have $80,000 for unforeseen traffic signal impacts. Part-time salary schedule, that component was approved by council back in July as well. We have educational meetings, $10,000, and then $7,000 for the memorial tree and bench program. That one is actually offset by revenues, so there's no impact. From REC and Community Services, again, part-time salary schedule, that's the largest increase to to their budget. We also have a social service program of $11,000, which is intended to be used with senior center reserve donations. And then we have another $11,000 to add the AAPI concert and Lunar New Year celebration later this year. For capital, we have I-405 improvement. That, $368,000 is made up of $175,000 that was council-approved back in December, plus some additional expenditures that were incurred and a balance on a PO. We also have reimbursable grant expenditures. That $30,000 is part of the SB2 and LEAP grant revenue, so that will be offset. And then we're recommending a reduction. It actually results in a reduction of $180,000 to transfers from the general fund to CIP, and that is for $300,000 savings that we had on the new land payment failure and the addition of a server room pre-action system. So looking at our current budget in the first column with nine point, almost 9.2 million was our deficit, with these adjustments, we're looking at bringing it just to over $9 million. Oh, and I, did I cover everything? I did not, sorry. Internal service funds. So we, that's a total of $662,000 that we're looking at adding. The majority is for government buildings. We have $355,000 there, and that's things like water heaters for the fire stations, doors, we had some furniture for City Hall and HR, and we had some additional equipment for Community Services, water heaters, some benches for the sports field. We also have $107,000 for IT, which is mainly the PD rear door camera installation and all the equipment, as well as licenses and software. And then $100,000 for capital equipment. The majority of that is for PD, so that's going to be ballistic SWAT vests, canines, furnishings, and firearms. And then for Community Services, we had an AED and some outdoor basketball hoops for the sports park. And then also, back on the December 19th meeting, we, the engagement committee had discussed initiatives that they wanted included. We did not factor that in here, but staff did discuss, and we can cover any costs that might be incurred with the existing budget.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I have a question on the I-405 improvement. That's reimbursable, so the 368K, so is that included as a revenue adjustment as well?
I think we included the revenue already and not.
Well, isn't it coming in the next?
Yeah, we don't expect it to be received in the current fiscal year.
Okay.
There's a chance it could, which would be great, but ultimately, yes, we will.
Ultimately, okay. All right.
I had that same question. So it's, will it be adjusted next year or it be built into next year's budget?
All right, going back. Okay, so looking at our other funds, CIP, we're starting with other funds. We have a $79,000 increase to AQMD. That's for Jasmine Senior Apartments loan and interest payments. We have water, it's a $652,000 decrease, actually. That's made up of 1.6 million savings for deferring some projects to a future year. That's well eight, the MWD connection and condition assessment. We're asking for $147,000 for utilities, well nine, replacement of the VFD, LCRR inventory, I believe that was already council-approved, and fire hydrant materials. And then we have a couple of additions to existing projects, which is well 10. We have some security features added on for water delivery and then organizational analysis for the master plan rate study, so that's additional $800,000. Sewer fund, those are both existing projects, but we're going to be adding a rate study to the master plan, and there's just additional cost increases for structural improvements. That's an additional $150,000. Solid waste, there's a net zero impact, but we're asking for an increase to revenue and expense of $54,000. That's for a beverage and organic waste grant money that was received last fiscal year but was unearned, so it's just been sitting there, and we'd like to appropriate that so they can spend it before it expires. We have $100,000 for a successor agency. That's for a paramedic impact fee. And then.
I'm sorry, hold on one sec.
Yes.
Councilmember Harper?
I have a question. So the, on the water fund, it's, you're asking for additional $600,000 for the completion of well site number 10. So is that, is it over budget or is it just?
No, actually, it's being absorbed in the savings. We're not, sorry.
Well, no, the well site 10, you're asking, if I'm reading this correctly, I know in total, there's water savings.
Yes.
For this particular well site number 10 project, are you saying it's $600,000 over budget?
No, actually, it's, it was, it was not a budgeted project originally, or it was, started last year.
Well, but we had a, we had a rehab for that well, number 10.
It started last year.
Okay.
It wasn't completed, and it wasn't budgeted for originally this year. So we're reallocating some of those funds to finish it.
Okay, but it, as far as what we originally thought it would cost, I don't know if Scott knows, is that, what did, is it, is it what we expected it to cost or, you know, or is there some, or is there some unforeseen cost that happened at well number 10?
I think it was an oversight and not including it in the budget. It was just some final items. I don't know what the original cost was. Supposed to be.
Okay, maybe we can.
I believe it's finished now, and.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It may actually come in below the 600. That was just the original ask.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure. Going on to CIP, we had, like I mentioned before, $300,000 savings for the new land payment failure. We had some existing projects that we're asking for some additional funding for. That includes some signal, citywide traffic signal equipment, synchronizations, and payment rehab. And then we're also asking to add two new projects. We have that server room pre-action system that I mentioned, and then a Fountain Valley school signage assessment. The the science assessment would be coming from gas tax funding, and the server rooms coming from general fund. And I think that's it for me. I have no further questions.
Thank you for your report. Appreciate it.
And then I'll just finish up with a few staffing modifications that have been requested with the mid-year budget. The first one is to add an additional human resources technician position, and this would be to help with the workload that the HR department has experienced an increase of over the last few years. The second one is a community development department, a reclass of the housing coordinator position to a neighborhood improvement manager, and this is to take on the additional duties with the, the new housing, sorry, the navigation center that's opening this year. And then finally, in the finance department, we're asking to reclass a senior accounting technician to a revenue supervisor position, and that's going to be to take on the implementation and operation of the the new water utility billing system. So in all, the total impact to the current budget of these positions is $45,420. As you can see, the the note on here, the the two reclasses are fairly minimal impact, and those will be absorbed through some salary savings that we've already got in the, in those departments. But we also have the annual cost of these changes. The the HR technician would be a total annual cost of $109,000, and the two reclasses are $6,875 for the neighborhood manager, and the revenue supervisor is $5,375 for an entire year. So those are the the requested staffing modifications with the mid-year. And so with that, the next steps, the current fiscal year ends on June 30th. We're going to begin our budget kickoff for the next year budget, the 2425 budget cycle, and that will begin on March 1st. We expect to bring a budget workshop on May 7th to council, and we expect to bring a proposed budget for adoption on June 4th. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation, and the recommended action is to receive and file the major budget review and approve the budget amendments as outlined in the staff report. So.
All right.
Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions? One thing I always like to, first, no question, okay, one thing I always like to bring up when we look at these numbers is it's scary when, if you don't realize what we're really saying here. So we had a $3 million surplus, but we're spending $13 million out of capital improvements with a net loss of $10 million. But those capital projects are projects that have been backlogged for a while and have been funded in prior years. So I don't want any of the residents or anybody to think that we're, you know, having a deficit of $10 million into the general fund. So if you could just confirm, that's the, I'm correct there?
That's correct, and that's why when we, when I talked at the beginning, we have an operating surplus, which is kind of our operating, going on everyday expenditures of about $3 million for the year. So once we add on those one-time. So once we add on those one-time, uh, capital expenditures, that's where we get the deficit. But our operating, uh, our operating budget is still in a surplus right now.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll move to approve the recommended action.
Motion by Councilman Harper. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Kinnin. Let's vote. Thank you so much, Ryan.
Item numbers, item number seven passes five zero.
All right.
Can I make a comment too?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I just want to also congratulate Colin and, Colin, not Colin, not you.
Congratulations.
Ryan, congratulate Ryan and the finance team. As you, as you may know, we implemented a new, um, system, enterprise system called Munis, which re-did the way we entered invoices. We have a new accounting general ledger. And recently, we implemented, we converted our payroll over to the Munis system, and they completed their first payroll, uh, this last week, I guess, successfully. So I know a lot of work went into that, and I understand everything, everything went, went well with no problems. So congratulations, great job.
Thank you, Councilman Harper. All right, item number eight, amendment to Community Services Department user fee schedule. Presentation by Rob Purzel, our Community Services Director. I looked up.
I got to start the meeting and maybe end it here. Real quick, I'm probably not allowed to do this, but a quick update related to the budget presentation. We did follow up with Michelle Steele's representative related to the five hundred thousand dollars that's been appropriated to the city for the UAP as part of the federal budget. They do expect that budget to be passed in the next month to two months. Typically, it's passed by November. So we're a little bit behind, but none of the appropriations have been identified to be removed at this point, so that's great news. So along with that five hundred thousand dollars, we also have a resolution coming to our next city council meeting on the thirtieth to accept the award for a million dollars from the state from Office of Tretah. So those grants are moving forward. So it's great, great news. All right, thank you so much for this opportunity tonight. We're going to be talking about the Community Services user fees and a proposed user fee schedule amendment. On July eighteenth of this year, City Council approved a part-time employee wage increase of fifty percent of county average to be in line with our full-time staff members. At that time, City Council requested staff to review our current user fees related to those part-time staff. One thing that I thought was an interesting note is we haven't had a, any fee increases for our department, which is really a market-based user fee. We've had no increases since the two thousand and sixteen California minimum wage law was passed, where it went from nine dollars at that time in two thousand and fifteen on that five-year scale, up to, up to fifteen dollars an hour, and has continued to go up beyond that. So we've seen minimum wage double since that time, and we haven't increased any of these fees. And you'll see here in a minute that the majority of our fees are typically aligned with the staff support that, that goes to provide those programs, services or events. And I will have the city attorney approve what I wrote here, that the user fees are not subject to Prop sixteen and the noticing requirements, because these are a market-based fee where you are not required to come and rent our softball field or play in our soccer league. You can choose anywhere to go do that. So Colin?
That's correct, yes. It's unlike a fee imposed.
Thank you.
Unlike a fee imposed is an instance of property ownership. You own this property, you must pay these fees. These are completely voluntary. They're market-based. Prop two eighteen doesn't apply.
Wonderful, thanks. So a little bit more background on these proposed amendments. Again, like I said, Community Services user fees are based on market rates, like what are other cities, businesses, private business, public agencies charging? What is the staff support to provide those services? And we'll get into that a little bit more. And then also our public service, services, our Public Works internal services. So obviously, our Public Works Department does a lot of work to maintain the beautiful facilities that we have out there, and all that goes into what we're looking at charging. Eighty percent, give or take, depending on the season, eighty, eighty percent of our department is part-time staff. We have amazing part-time staff hired by Jenny and Jake and our team over here. They really are the front line of our city. More people probably come into contact with our part-time employees for the Community Services Department than any other aspect in, in, in the city. So we're really proud of the work that they do. We really, really thank City Council for that fifty percent wage increase, not, not wage increase, two fifty percent accounting average, to pay them appropriately for the amazing job they do. You can see here, like I said, in two thousand and fifteen, before we increased wages, we were at nine dollars an hour, and we are now at eighteen fifty for a starting step to twenty-two forty-nine for our rec leaders. And for our higher-level specialists, it's twenty-three seventy-five to twenty-eight fifty-six. And that's our awesome staff. Jake, when was this from? Was this last summer or this summer?
Two summers ago.
So one requirement is there has to be somebody taller than me in the department, and that's Bear. You can see his head goes a little bit taller than me, so that's, good job on hiring correctly. All right. So I'm just going to run through some of the fees that'll be increased with some of our major program units or some other ones. I'm happy to answer any questions that I, that you may have. I highlighted some in different colors to specify. The only fee that we're reducing is related to our adult soccer program. We actually used to pay the referees from our league fees. Now the sports teams play, pay them directly. So like when you show up, each team would give the referee twenty dollars for, and that's an agreed-upon amount that we have with that, that league. So we're not reducing it, we're just not having that same expenditure. Adult softball to five fifteen and five forty-five after the deadline. We like, we have an early registration discount, and same thing for senior softball at a discounted rate for seniors. Our largest program unit that we have that typically brings in about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year is our ball field rentals. So this is a really important increase for us. We are looking to increase the rates from, from a single ball field rental from thirty dollars an hour to forty dollars an hour. Those rates are really based on, we have staff that are out there on a regular basis that are supporting these programs and services. But at the same time, we built these, and this is my own Community Services Parks and Rec motto here, we built these facilities to be used by our community. So we don't want to outprice the, what a local youth group or community group's able to afford to go out there and use those, those fields. So from thirty to forty dollars is about a thirty-three percent increase. So while it is a lot of an increase, we do think it's still a quality, market-based rate for user groups to use. Soccer field's the same exact thing, forty dollars an hour. One of our highest revenue producers for our department is the tournament flat rate. Tournament rates is when, because it's pretty much all I do, I have three boys that play baseball all the time, and I pay tournament rates all over, including here, is when large tournaments come in for the weekend, they pay a flat rate per field for an all-day rental. And usually, they'll take between four, six, eight, and sometimes like twelve fields. And so times six hundred dollars per day, which includes three field prep. So we have staff out there all day, they'll support these tournaments, and during specified times, they'll go out there, they'll re-drag the fields and re-line the fields for them. Light fees are nineteen to thirty-two dollars an hour. Basically, the majority of our lights are nineteen dollars an hour. It's the actual cost that we're charged that we pass along to the user groups, but we have some larger banks on some of our soccer fields that are higher power that costs more. And so it's a direct rate, and we'll, we'll let the user group know what those rates are prior to going out there to play. The light fees have not been increased. The tournament rates for the all-day have been from four hundred to six hundred, and like I said, the, the regular field rentals from thirty to forty. We do want to maintain a twenty-five percent discount for nonprofit Fountain Valley youth groups. So the, the agency, the youth, the, the nonprofit has to have a Fountain Valley address as its, as its address. And like I said, the light fees vary depending on what light rates they are. We also wanted to increase our special event filing and rental fees. We have some amazing events that come to our sports park, and we love to have them. I put the original Lobster Fest on there as a, an example. So we are looking to increase those rates to seven fifty for a filing fee. What that goes into a filing fee, somebody's going to come and say, I want to have an event here. And while it sounds easy just to take the permit and do it, there's a lot of work that goes into it. We have to work with staff, the vendor, PD, fire, we got to go around and make sure everything works, how they're going to, they propose it, what agencies we have to get permits from and all that sort of thing. And so there is staff cost that goes into it. And so we're looking to increase that from five seventy to seven fifty. The large event filing fee from one thousand fifty to fifteen hundred, that's for these larger events. It takes a lot more time and preparation to support them. And then on top of those filing fees, there is a single or multi-day rental from one fifty to two fifty for the single day, and from three hundred to four fifty per day for the multi-day. And then when we have a large event, outdoor event rental, seven fifty per day, that's something that's going to take up the entire sports park. Another area that we're going to increase, that are looking to increase related to staff time, is our facility rentals. You may remember a couple of years ago, we came and introduced a flat rate user fee, simple, community-based fee rentals for our rooms. It was a little bit overly complex in the past, and it really, there was minimum hours and a few different things that really made it difficult for anything other than like organizations or churches or people that do regular rentals to use the facilities. And our goal was, and, and our city manager at the time said, we want to rent these things so much that we have to change out the floors every single year. And now we are almost there, and I know, I know our mayor's tried to rent out the facility a year in advance for poker tournaments and that sort of thing. And multiple times, I've already told him, it's already booked out a whole year in advance. We got you a date, but this is all we got. So the rooms have been extraordinary, so successful. However, when it's that successful, we have a lot of staff cost associated with it. And so for the larger rentals, for, you can see it says occupancy up to, for the one sixty and two fifty, we want to increase it by thirty-five dollars. And what that is, right now, we're only charging for one staff member, and we're basing that at the old staff rate of fifteen dollars an hour. So it needs to go up to twenty-five dollars an hour. That's what we're averaging our staff rate at, and we want to add a second staff member. Because for any of these large rentals, they're usually after hours, and we always put two staff members anyways. So we want to increase it by thirty-five dollars an hour for all those, for those larger ones. For the smaller ones at eighty, we're only going to increase it by ten dollars an hour because that's, that's a smaller room, and typically, those will be during daytime or a different time where we don't have to bring in the secondary staff member. And then the smallest one, twenty-five on the far left there, those are our, you know, our rotary groups coming to meet in the morning, our, our other smaller community groups or some art classes or banjo classes, or different things that, that they rent the facility, small, small, small rooms, small cost. Those are almost all the time during staff hours, so we don't have to bring in additional staff to support that. And we want to maintain, again, that, that, that cost-effective way for our community residents to use our buildings.
Rob, just with a clarification.
Sure.
On the gym side?
Yes, sir.
What is the occupancy? I don't see it show there.
Oof, gosh, I knew you were going to have a question to answer too. What do you think, is it about three hundred? Michelle Rudius is going to kill me because I should know this.
It's around three hundred.
It's about three hundred.
I know about the function.
If you're going to put tables and different things in there, but about, around three hundred.
That's a great room. Thank you.
Yep, of course. We do have some additional fees that I'm asking to include in the user fee schedule that haven't been there before, and I want to make sure that we've identified them and provide you the opportunity to see what those fees are. Senior-themed luncheon, we continue to get bigger and better. For those of you that have came to our senior luncheons, they're awesome. Sometimes, while the food costs are going up, we really, really want to maintain the low, the low cost, but sometimes there might be a call for, they really want a special event or something that's going to cost just a little bit more for the senior to come. So we wanted to have a range of options. We don't want to charge more, but it would be specific to if there was an event that we wanted to hold there that, that called for getting a nicer meal or something different. Again, we don't want to price out any seniors, and our goal is to leave it as is, but, but in the years coming forward, you know, the cost of meals continue to go up. Drop-in special events, we have all sorts of drop-in special events. Again, so there's a range there. Summer Fest is five bucks to get into. Senior, our Bingo Bash is coming up, that's super popular. Breakfast with Santa, different, we have different special events, and so we wanted to have a range of, of prices for a drop-in special events between five and twenty-five dollars. Drop-in recreation programs, we have badminton and pickleball, to name a few, and those are in the gym, and you come in and, and it's two to five dollars right now, we'd like to go to three to seven dollars. Those are usually after hours, and so it goes to pay for our staff costs associated with that. Great Fountain Valley campout, where again, we're looking at doing some optional pricing for this year. People really want to be able to pick their spot next to specific campers, and it makes it, it's just more difficult on staff and time. So we are looking at providing that option. So again, we're, we're looking at ranges for that, and it might, uh, increase related to the food that we're able to get. And then in, in the, in the staff report, the fountain pen and the senior newsletter have some advertising rates, and so the full ranges for the rates are identified in there. So if you want the inside front cover of the fountain pen, I believe it's a thousand fifty, the back page, yes, sir?
I'm sorry, for the campout, what was the old price?
It is fifty-five dollars right now. So we want to provide a range for it.
And what's going to be seventy-five versus fifty-five?
If we, if we allow for people to pick specific spots, if they want to be next to each other, it's kind of like VIP, or depending if In-N-Out or whoever we're choosing for food increases their costs on us.
And that's typically available for about three minutes, once we?
For about three minutes, yeah. So you better, you should get ready to register right about now.
My only thing there, I, I really think that is way underpriced for a family for camping. When we include dinner, we include breakfast, I mean, that, that price for a family of how many people?
It, it can be up to four, correct, Jake? Up to five.
So eleven dollars?
If you'd like to increase it to a hundred, like give us that range, we, we would be open to that. We, we still want to maintain this as a low cost, you know, urban camping opportunity for our community, but we would take that obviously into consideration, what you like.
Don't upset our families.
I think that is, that is one area that if we were to go higher, I would see like a ninety-five dollar price for that would be reasonable.
We could be open to that.
And then it'll take five minutes to sell out instead of three.
It is a pretty neat event. And we always appreciate everybody volunteering to support it. So briefly, the proposed revenue increases, we, we recognize that we're being extremely conservative on these rates, and, and, and a lot of it comes due to the weather and different things that happen out on the fields. We can have great years where it's sunny all year, or some years it's really rainy and we miss months at a time. But we anticipate an increase of thirty-five percent to our field rentals, which will be about eighty-one thousand, between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars a year. Our senior room rentals and our rec center room rentals somewhere around twenty-five percent, again, super conservative on that, most likely around thirty to fifty thousand dollars in rental increases. We are so packed with those rentals, it's amazing, and staff's doing an amazing job. And then all the other miscellaneous fees, we think will average somewhere around a hundred and twenty-five to about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in increased revenue. And again, we're being conservative with that number. And that's, that's looking to offset, as you saw in the presentation before, the, the increase of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in part-time staff, as you identified on July eighteenth. So staff's recommendation is to approve the amendments to the Community Services Department user fee. One note is we will be going through the user fee discussion with our finance department. Specifically, we want to make sure these fees are appropriate for our community and to associate it with the, the proposed COLA increase with those user fees, because we don't want to end up coming, you know, being stuck ten years from now, doing the exact same thing where we haven't increased our fees. So I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from council?
I do.
First, Mayor Bowie?
Well, first of all, Rob, thank you for the thorough report.
Of course.
You know, as you know, that, I really appreciate that, you know, the staff has been very conservative on the numbers. As you know, that no one likes price increase, right?
Of course.
But yet, at the same time, we have to cover our costs to continue to provide excellent service to our community. Can you reassure to a community that, how do you come up? service to our community. Can you reassure to a community that, how do you come up with those numbers? How is it reasonable, you know, in relation to other cities? So, that way, the public can understand that you did do your homework, and those are the best number you come out with.
So, I apologize. Sometimes I get a little enthusiastic when I talk. I had my notes right here to make sure to identify, you know, looking at our field rates and different user groups. So, it's, it's difficult, because it's not always apples to apples, but specifically, like our largest program unit, our field rentals, Irvine for the, for the Great Park is $765 per day, and that does include staff and, and field preps. Where Lake Forest, and those are the two most comparable sports parks to ours, is $500 a day. So, less than us, but they charge a flat $500 daily field prep fee. So, we're really right in line, not per field, just for their complex. We're really right in line with Lake Forest. The nice thing about the Great Park is they just have so many fields. So, we want to be competitive with them, because it's, for, for one of those tournaments that are coming, they're there to make money, right? And so, the more games they can play on a larger complex, the more money they can make. So, we want to make sure that we're still desirable at a market-based rate. We think our facility's second to none, and when people get there, our staff support of the events is second to none, and families always love it. They always talk about the concession stand up there. Matt Taylor does an amazing job with the concession stand. Public Works is, is great to support internal services. And then, our PD and fire, should there ever be issues, are, they're right here and really supportive. So, we're proud of the services that we give, but we still do want to be under Irvine, because they're kind of, their, their Great Park is kind of the echelon right now, and right in line with Lake Forest.
Great. Thank you.
Of course.
Councilmember Harper?
Oh, good. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilmember Constantine. A second? Somebody?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Harper. And call for the vote?
Item number eight passes 5-0.
All right. Councilmember Items for Future Consideration. Do we have any items?
I do.
Councilmember Constantine?
Okay, since, since sitting here, I was thinking, I'd like us to please look into doing a protected left turn added to the traffic signal at Talbert and Bouchard, and then at Brookhurst and Hile. That one would be as you turn left out of the sports park onto Brookhurst from Hile. So, coming out of the sports park, making that left onto Brookhurst is necessary. And then-
Okay, so, oh, is there other part-
Well, no, not related to that, yeah.
Coming out of the sports park, making that left onto Brookhurst, I could not agree more. That is a really dangerous left turn, because you can't, when the cars are coming towards the sports park, making a left, you can't see around them when you're making a left. So, I would, I'll second that.
Thank you.
And do you have another item?
Yeah, the other item is, well, we were last here in the meeting on December 19th, and we talked, I brought up the banner flags. And so, nothing's changed. We have more in the city. Plus, now we have campaign signs, which are really temporary, non-commercial speech signs, because, you know, there's going to be an election on March 5th. So, I'm concerned we're going to be more inundated with signage, and I don't know what we can do. I mean, I'm supposed to be proposing an idea, but I'm thinking, I just don't know. How can we? I, if I, you know, if somebody wants me to go pull signs, I'm in. But, that's all I can say.
Well, let's remind the candidates that are out there during this election season, you may not put signs greater, I think it's three square feet. You may not do, put them on any kind of telephone poles, or raised up, or in medians. If you're putting it in a shopping center of any type, you have to get permission from the landlord. So, if you're seeing candidates out there that are not following the rules in Fountain Valley, we are not, our neighboring cities who allow eight-square-foot signs, and them to be just about anywhere. My recommendation to you is contact the candidate. Tell them, because it's, they're probably not aware of themselves. They're probably not the ones putting them up, I'm sure. But, I think they would like to know if, you know, if the community's not happy about it, make sure you let the candidates know. And if they're smart, they'll, they'll start following our rules. But, the other thing is, call code enforcement. I mean, it's-
Yeah, because, I mean, we have a bunch up on the light poles. They're never permitted on the light poles. That's a whole other, and on fencing.
So, I guess one thing we could do is let's ask our residents, contact the candidate. If you, whether you support them or you don't support them, either way, be nice about it. Make sure they know the rules and where it is, and ask them to remove it. Not sure what more we can do, but-
I'm still available to pull signs if I need to. Thank you.
We'll get you a stepstool. Okay. Any other councilmember items for future consideration? Not seeing any where, any?
I'd like to add to, Councilmember Kim referenced to the flag. I think we have ordinance. I think they could call this, just code enforcement if it's referenced to that.
We do have an ordinance, and I drive around, and I see lots of them. And I'm just concerned where, they're going to get out of control. That's really my biggest concern, because there's more. And I don't know when, when a business is going through the process with City Hall, if we let them know that this is not permitted, if they're just putting these out because they want to for their businesses, I don't, I don't know.
Okay. I don't hear an item actually to be approved.
Yeah, there's no item.
No item, okay. Well, thank you for sharing that. City Council, Successor Agency, any other public comments?
I have no other requests.
No one?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. City Council, Successor Agency, Housing Authority, AB 1234. General comments? Let's start on this side. Councilmember Keneen.
Thank you, Mayor. On January 13th, our Fountain Valley Rotary Club held its semi-annual Camp Pendleton Marine Family Home Furnishings Donation and Drop-Off Event at Founder's Village. I want to especially recognize Vice Mayor Bowie, who worked all day to make this event successful. Not, not to embarrass him, because he's very humble, but this is what he did. He picked up a 26-foot U-Haul in Lake Forest, loaded it up with donations there, drove to Founder's Village, where he helped load items from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Then, he drove to Camp Pendleton on a Saturday, which is insanely heavy traffic on the I-5, emptied the entire truck, then drove back up to Orange County, getting home after dark. So, truly service above self, Vice Mayor. Thank you so much. This morning, yeah. This morning, I attended the Most Improved Students Award presented by our Fountain Valley Rotary Club, where Mayor Grandis and FESD School Board President Steve Schultz also presented the amazing students with recognitions from our city and school districts respectively. We had Seth from Fountain Valley High School and Samson from Talbert Middle School. These celebrations of student grit, overcoming struggles, and amazing achievements were once again so heartwarming to experience. At noon today, I attended the quarterly meeting of the OCTA Citizens Advisory Committee, which I advise chair. In the now post-I-405 improvement era, we received multiple updates on the initiatives and projects there at OCTA, including a transit vision survey results, feedback, coastal rail resiliency study, Interstate 5 South Improvement Project, and the M2 Next 10 Delivery Plan. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bowie.
Thank you, Mayor. So, since my colleague, I'll talk about January 13th, I also want to thank him for coming out. He has, you know, his family take care of, you know, his duties on Saturday, but he chose to come out and help out, and took part of the collections. And after that, he said, "Ted, I got to go. I got stew laundry to do." So, I want to thank him for coming out. I also want to thank you, former Mayor Sherbrooke, she came out, and she donated items that she no longer needs. Also, I want to shout out to Robin's Nest and the community. I remember this lady. She came out, and she gave one, it's called baby rocking chair, and she's, the story she's telling me, "I've been holding this thing for 47 years, and now I'm donating it." And I told her, "You know what? I think the Marine will appreciate it. It will, you know, you, it will give a good cause to the families that the Marines are really needed." So, I want to thank you for all the residents that have donated. We have about 50 at the end of the day. I think we count about 50 families in Fountain Valley came out and donate items that they no longer need it, and it has been going to good cause. So, I want to thank everyone. That's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bowie. Councilmember Harper?
Thank you. Since the last meeting on January 8th, attended the OCTA Board Meeting. And at that meeting, I just want to congratulate our Fountain Valley, our own Tam Nguyen, who was elected to be the Chairman of the Board, Fountain Valley resident, for this year at OCTA. So, congratulations to Tam. Also, we got an update on the 405 Express Lanes. They originally started, they opened December 1st. The first week, they did about 25,000 trips a day. Most recently, they're averaging about 40,000 trips a day, people using the express lanes, which is about what we expected in the projection. But, so far, so good. On January 10th, attended the OCTA Finance Committee Meeting. And one of the interesting things in that meeting, they presented a budget update. And what's notable there is that sales tax, while, has been increasing over the last several years for government agencies, including Fountain Valley. This is the first, first time that we've seen it actually, they're seeing it slow down. So, sales tax revenues were about flat compared to the previous years. So, it could be, the economy's slowing down. Also, gas prices are down, which affects sales tax. So, more on that, but, but that's an interesting trend to keep an eye out for. And then, lastly, on last Thursday, January 11th, attended the Chamber of Commerce mixer at Carlito's Diner. Good Mexican food. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Harper, Councilmember Constantine?
Sure. I submitted my list, which mentioned I attended the PCTA Meeting, Committee for Persons with, Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities, Orange County Mosquito and Victor Control, and various other. But, I just want to take a moment to remind everybody that the Valentine's Dance for the Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities is going to be Friday, February 2nd, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and that's going to be at the center, center at Founder's Village, and that's on Bouchard at Talbert. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go through my list pretty quick. So, Wednesday, December 20th, I was interviewed on Little Saigon TV, a really interesting interview. On Thursday, December 21st, Fountain Valley Community Foundation Board Meeting and Volunteer Holiday Party. Thursday, December 28th, we had a Kiwanis Bowling Party for Robin's Nest students. On Saturday, January 6th, we had our Kiwanis Holiday Party, which was delayed from December. Monday, January 8th, the Fountain Valley Schools Foundation Board Meeting. On Thursday, January 11th, there were a few items. Now, the representative for Cal Cities on OCAG, the Orange County Council of Governments, and we had a special board meeting. I also attended the Fountain Valley Chamber Network at Night at Carlito's, and also attended that night the Fountain Valley School District, the first meeting with Steve Schultz as the new school board president. Congratulations to Steve. Just like me, he's a fellow Baron. So, I think he's, I think he's the first Baron School Board President, and at the same time, I'm the first Baron Mayor. So, that's kind of cool. And then, on Friday, January 12th, I attended the Coastline Community College Foundation Strategic Planning Board Meeting, and also went to the Cal Cities OC Division Board Meeting. I'm the first district rep. And then, today, we had the Rotary Club Most Improved Student Award. And one thing that was kind of funny is, one of the students, I saw his dad, and we were looking at each other like we knew each other, and we did. He used to work for me back in 1985, and we hadn't seen each other in almost 40 years, and it was great to see him again. So, that, and that was a great event at Rotary today, really inspiring. So, that is my report, and at this time-
Mr. Mayor, sorry, since the next meeting is not a regular first Tuesday, I wanted to just note that we are adjourning this meeting to an adjourned regular meeting on January 30th.
Okay. I was just going to say, the next regular meeting of the Fountain Valley City Council is January 30th at 6:00 p.m. and the Fountain Valley Council Chairs. But, thank you for making sure it's clear to everybody. And I want to thank my, my councilmembers here that we have a five-week month in January. So, we're moving the meeting up from the first week of February, the last, to the last meeting in January. I will be away on a business trip the first week of February. So, I appreciate everybody's willingness to accommodate me. So, thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.